Please call the roll.
Hoffman.
Here.
Lahr.
Here.
Krakenberg.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Ferris.
Here.
And here.
All right. We have a form. Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, June 16th, 2025. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $1,646,564.10 and payroll expenses of Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Greg or Joe? All right. I have a motion by Mr. Hoffman and a second by Mr. Bowman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Krakenberg.
Yes.
Ferris.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. No planning commission meeting, no hospital authority meeting, the library board, there was no forum at the library board meeting. You've got the minutes in your packet from the arena authority meeting. Is there any questions on that? Are there any questions on that? All right. The tourism tax commission meeting on July 18th. Mrs. Beard, can you give us a report, please?
Yes. That was a pretty routine meeting. One of our members did step down, Terry. So if you have any recommendations or somebody you would like Melinda Barton to speak to to possibly fill that seat, please get with her. Heather Fox presented the recap for Nesca Tongo. She said it was a pretty successful year. Coach Ronnie Jones presented for the Northwestern Football Golf Tournament. He said it was another great year. There was an article in the front of the paper, too, that goes a little bit more in depth. Rodeo coach Callie Griffin came to request $15,000 for the upcoming rodeo in October 2025, and that was approved not to exceed 15,000. And our hotel tax funds increased by $45,000 for fiscal year 25 ending compared to fiscal year 24. So, any questions?
I will add that I have asked that tourism commission members bring back a recommendation to me so I can bring it to the city council, but we will have the decision on whether or not to approve that recommendation. So if you do have other people that you'd like them to consider, please let one of them know or let me know and we'll get that information out to them. All right. There was no board of adjustments meeting. The airport commission met on July 14th. And addition to our standard reports, we did hear a request for donation from the Little Red Hands for their wheels, wings, and things to pay for the monster truck that's coming to town for that. The board did not approve that request, but would like to have brought back to them anything that might have to do with aviation in the future. So, there's that. And then there was, action was tabled on items regarding bulk fuel discount for local pilots, and we've asked the airport manager to come back with more information on maybe what other airports are doing and what that might look like if we did give it consideration here at the Alva Airport. Any questions regarding the airport meeting? All right. Parks and Recreation Committee meeting on July 9th. Mrs. Swallow?
We discussed the lighting proposals. No action was taken, and we're looking at different options to replace the bulbs that are needed for current poles and lights that are out. We're preparing for fall tournaments and sports. The pool has been going very well. We average about 250 kids each week or people each weekday and 325 on weekends. So far, we've had enough donations for all of the pool admissions of kids to be paid. Everything was working well until the other day when the chlorine threw a fit, I guess. So, but other than that, everything's going well.
Any questions regarding the Parks and Rec meeting? Thank you. There was not a forum for the cemetery meeting, finance committee meeting. Dr. Lahr?
We've talked about a couple CDs that are coming up for maturity. We're going to go out for a bid of about $44,000, $45,000 for the CDs. We'll have the others come up till December of this year. Outside of that, we talked about kind of where we're finishing out from last year's budget. We're about 1% over, which was about $300,000, but we did move enough to offset that into the capital improvements fund, as well as we budgeted to sell the sanitation equipment, which was about $200,000 that we did not sell yet. So we're planning to do that this fiscal year. Outside of that, as you said, they sent everything to Crawford's. They looked over everything, didn't see anything alarming, and then we'll have our formal audit person come talk to us in August. About there.
And I'll add, we do have several budget amendments for the last fiscal year. If you're new on the city council, this is pretty standard to have some budget amendments to make sure that all of our funds are accurately reflected and that the general fund is budget neutral. So these will be for, the majority of what we have tonight is going to be for last year's budget, and it's basically, you know, just our paperwork side of things that reflects what we actually did. Some of it's more revenue, some of it's more expenses, some of it's more expenses because there was more revenue and that sort of thing. So as we get going through those, we've got people here that can answer questions. So, any questions for Dr. Lahr? All right. The mayor's report. I will say that everybody, I just want to extend my deepest gratitude for everybody that helped with the all-school reunion that took place this last weekend. It was a phenomenal weekend for our community. I expect that there will be an economic impact to be measured from that as well, and so Roger will look forward to hearing what that is. Sorry, I have my calendar. The, I sent an email out just a few minutes before the meeting, and I'd like for you guys to take a look at this. It's a proclamation that I have for fiscal years 26 and 27, kind of some objectives that I'd like for the council to maybe place their focus on as we move into the next couple of years. Largely, this is in an effort to make our municipality, our municipal government work more efficiently and enable us to take better care of our community. We'll, I'll probably plan on either having a special meeting or setting some time aside to go into more depth on that at a future time, not tonight. But as you read through that, feel free to give me a call to, you know, if you have any questions or have any ideas that maybe we need to make a priority as well. So this is not something that I've really ever done as mayor, but we've got quite a bit of imbalance between continuity and new leadership. So I think Gail and, no, Greg and I, or Gail and I are one, I don't know, but I got figuring it up the other day. And since 2015, I've served with 33 different council members, attorneys, and staff at this table. And so we need to probably make sure that we get a good plan moving forward, whereas we've had more continuity in the past, we've got, you know, more new ideas moving forward and make sure we get a plan for doing that. We do have an ordinance with Drew regarding temporary zoning for open containers. And you guys have seen the draft of that. Drew is going to have some things that he's working up to go along to make that something that more fits what our existing ordinances are so we don't have any ordinances in conflict with each other. But look forward to that being on a future agenda as well. And I think, unless anybody has any questions, that concludes my report. All right. City manager's report, Mr. Ford.
All right. My report is attached to the agenda. There's not a whole lot of report that wasn't already in that, in that report. Does that belong to your one, Mr. Parsons?
Let me see if you have the one that I didn't see at all. I'll let you know.
Okay. Yeah, let me know. But other than that, some of our work, well, there's been a large number of people that have been reporting that they have limbs or that they have bags of grass clippings that want picked up via the app. That works really well. It allows us to create work orders and track those work orders to completion. You know, if people just call in, it does quite the same effect. When we can do it electronically, it has a great effect. So I encourage you to keep doing that. It's working very well. Still seeing a ton of grass clippings being blown in the street. You know, if I had to see somebody doing it, I'll stop and tell them. So, you know, just shit happens, just get the word out that that is a violation of our city ordinances. And we got a new 522 district MOU from the, 52, what do they call that?
Their board.
Their board. So this one looks, identical to the last one we signed, it just, this one actually has numbers in it, so, which makes more sense to me. Other than that, that's, oh, yeah. And, oh wait, I'm sorry. I did get everyone to go to online the conference, signed up. So you're good to go. We've got your rooms for, well, you three, Joe and Greg and Kelly. We're going to have two P cards, so since you guys went out early, we'll send two P cards with you. That way you can pay for rooms on the P card, and then the rest, let's turn down the next day. So.
I was going to say on the grants part of the report summary, how many grants are, I mean, how many dollars are out there? As many grants as she's a guy, but I'm telling you, if you haven't looked through the city council, through the city business manager report, there's about two and a half, three pages worth of grants that we've, that we're working on or have already requested funds. So, any questions for Mr. Ford? I'm going to jump back up to my report. I forgot to mention, so last month, when we met, the council voted for me to represent the Alva, or the Woods County Mayor's on the Oklahoma Economic Development Authority. We had our, I had my first meeting a week or so ago down in, over in, uh, Beaver. 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 I haven't been to Beaver in a long time. It's a lot further out there than I remember. But they did vote to increase the REIT funding from a $75,000 max to $100,000 max for our district, so, or our region. So I tried to get them to take the limit off, but it wasn't a popular opinion. So, but we did get it increased. All right. There's no further questions on the reports. We'll move to remarks and inquiries by citizens. If you would like to make a comment, we'd ask that you would please identify yourself and stand up if you're able, and we'll give you two minutes to ask your questions or make your remarks. All right. Well, we're glad you're all here. And item eight is a presentation from City Economics. Mr. Godwin.
Feel fancy, I go on the agenda this time. Good evening, everybody. How y'all doing?
Great.
Wonderful. I've had some really cool conversations with people. Last couple of times I've been up here, I've gone to talk with some local business owners. My daughter and I came up here today and we're just talking with a young lady over at Holder. So excellent ice cream, by the way. Good coffee, 75 cents, just so you know. My dad would be very happy. There's a lot of opportunity to continue to help work with the youth, I think, here in this town and give them some opportunity. I know myself and some other people would love to be able to, you know, come in and, you know, just do a workshop or something because I was talking to a young lady and she is in communications and she had no idea that networking is a part of being a communications major. So she was very surprised that I would just start talking to her. It's like, well, if you're a communications major, it's like, you've got to talk to you. And, you know, every three feet, if you see somebody, you talk to them. It's kind of fun, you know? So anyways, just every single time I come here, I sit and I talk with different local people that are working here, and a lot of the times they're the younger people. It's like, hey, are you a transplant or are you here local and all that stuff? And it's been very interesting, the conversations that I've had. So you guys have a great access to a lot of young people here and to help grow the city and town. So anyways, to help encourage, you know, for them to stay here, because a lot of them come from small towns. And Alva is bigger than most of the small towns that these young people I've talked to have come from. So there's just opportunities for that. Got City by the Numbers report, you know, just what you guys have got. One of the things, 200 people a day to 300 people a day, you know, coming through for the pool is amazing. Mr. Ford asked me to get the report done. So my numbers show about 2,900 unique people came over the last 30 days. And that's in the parking lot, so that's parents dropping off kids or whatever, so that's not everybody getting into the pool. Just wanted to make the clarification on that. But it's a fantastic economic piece, and people are coming from all over. So I got you guys the geofencing for the last 30 days over at the Nightlight. You guys have a fantastic partner in that, Mr. Martin with that. People are coming from all over. This shows many people coming all the way from Stillwater, even outside Woodward, Texas, even outside of Kansas, Blackwell, Enid, Fairview. I also saw quite a few people coming in from Norman as well to the location. So I thought that was very, very fascinating. Good money coming from people that are doing that. People are spending money here in Alva that are going. So just outside of a couple other things is two places in Enid. Everybody else is hitting the Nightlight. Whether they're from out of town or in town, they're hitting Alva locations to buy. So we really love that. The pool, saw that report on the backside, and as we're able to get more years under our belt, we're going to be able to see what the real numbers are versus, hey, the pool is closed. So of course we're up 330% and up 464% and up 635%. So I'm a nerd and I like numbers. So that's just kind of one of those things, but I'd love to see what that's going to look like in the future. Two-person households, so obviously family, three kids, stuff like that. People are coming from all over the region as well, Cherokee, Helena, Winoka, Freedom. So people are coming in even from Southern Kansas to the pool to come and hang out. And again, for the most part, it looks like 100%, of the top 10 places that people are visiting, they're visiting the pool and they're spending money here in town. So look through that as you like, super, super nerdy stuff. The activity report, heard some rumblings of a place for Steve to buy slacks from, so I know he's very excited about that. So made some phone calls, still waiting to actually talk to somebody with that location about what's happening, about moving a, basically a clothing store up here to this district that's for men and women. Commercial updates, came up here and spoke with a property owner, and we made a first offer to him to see what he'll want to do, what we're supposed to do with him later on this week or next at his availability, to talk about purchasing that location. And there's another thing, so I had a discussion in the green on the second page. I had a random conversation with somebody that I did business with about 10 years ago and said, hey, I have a guy that wants to move a manufacturing facility to Oklahoma. And my first thought as well, Northwestern Oklahoma, I've got a client up here in Alva. I don't know if we have anything that will meet their criteria yet. We had, met for lunch, and they told me a couple of things that they need and want, but it provided around 20 jobs, 24 hours doing business, making pots and pans. So currently they're making 11,000 items a day in San Paulo. So they're wanting to move here to Oklahoma, have a conversation with Commerce here in a couple of weeks, as well as spoke with Jeremy Zeller, which is a fantastic partner that you guys have and that I have here in Alva. So there's a lot of things moving and happening, and very thankful that you guys allowed me to continue to do this. So also, next month I will have you guys a, the preliminary video for the tourism video that my guy shot when I was here doing the city vision plan, and that is being worked on as well. Any questions?
I'm hearing the rumblings, too. You know, more so than I've heard in the whole 10 years I've been mayor. So it's nice to hear something.
Yeah.
And then, you know, hopefully, you know, one or two of the rumblings end up crossing the finish line, but thank you, Roger, for, you know, beating bushes and getting our name out there.
My pleasure. Appreciate you.
Thanks, Roger. All right. Item nine, no action item, but you'll see in the packet, there's a thank you letter from Northwestern for our support, continued support from the city with the university. And our item number 10 is SRB LLC City Planning Presentation. Dakota was up with us in whatever that was, that we did the vision, the vision planning, and wowed us all, and I think a few of us that were there said, Steve, get her up here. We need to hear more of this. And so we're glad you're here. So I'll hand it over to you guys.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I'm Mark Wong. I'm a principal partner in SRB, and with me is Dakota Sai who is going to be carrying the main part of this presentation. But I did want to thank you guys for having us back up. We're very excited to continue working with Mr. Godwin on efforts that will help your planning and zoning and land use to kind of get you up to speed to where you need to be. You know, our firm is an engineering, surveying, and planning firm. We're really here for planning, and that is where Dakota leads our planning efforts. We were formed in 1981. As a surveying, engineering, and planning firm, we've done planning services across the state and primarily helping municipalities for well over 40 years. You know, my background is in engineering, but, you know, municipal growth and economic development always leads to other benefits, and so that's one of the things. My other partner is Taylor Dennison, who's up here. He is a land surveyor, but also leads our GIS services. So a lot of the work that Roger is talking to you about uses GIS, and this will be a way to get this information together to be able to capitalize on what Roger is doing. Known Roger for about 20 years as far as his past work in municipal government and working in economic development. He will be working on some of the things for us when it comes to looking at zoning and land use. He'll be helping support our team in making some of those decisions, complementing the work he's already doing, identifying properties and economic opportunities. And then Ms. Sai has been with us as an urban planner out of the University of Oklahoma, and we're very excited that she's leading this effort for you guys.
All right. My name's Dakota. I'm glad to be here. Came up here a couple months ago, first time in Alva ever, and I was pleasantly surprised by Alva Beer Company, Brewing Company, beer. They're so good. Like, I'm used to Oklahoma City breweries, and there's one on every corner, but then this one was really good. So I'm glad to be back. Whenever we were at the vision planning meeting, started talking obviously a lot about economic development, things that you want to see here, and then hand in hand with that, unexpected conversation was planning. Planning is, you know, the nuts and bolts of putting all of these things together, the baseline of city growth, really. And so a lot of what we were talking about was just, you know, zoning maps, boring but necessary, and also helps you to be, you know, legally defensible and up to date and all of those things. So a lot of my experience comes in from doing, you know, things from small, tiny projects all the way up to comprehensive planning efforts for some rural areas. I've done parks master plans, I've done municipal on-call projects, I've done sidewalk master plans. So really, just all over the place, but all things that I enjoy. So for SRB, a lot of the things that we provide, we do everything from like application services for rezonings, lot splits, PUDs and SPDs, we do grant writing, lots of it, from local, state, and federal level. We've had a lot of success in that as well. Mostly, most of the success has been in transportation grants, so bike lanes, sidewalks, resurfacing, intersections, striping, all of those things. And we've also done master and comprehensive plans and special studies. And then on top of that, we offer municipal support services and then a lot of GIS mapping services. So drone flights and data acquisition, database management, maps, graphic reports, all things that really have helped to convey these messages and give everybody a good idea and concept of where the city stands. So whenever I was at the vision planning meeting, a lot of what came up was, you know, Alva's ordinances haven't been updated in quite a long time. And even in just my cursory, or at least an overall comprehensive update. And in my cursory research of it, some of the things are outdated. There's about 21 different zoning categories, which is a lot for a place that has a population of 5,000 people. And then on top of that, I don't think that there's an existing zoning map that's up to date. Is that correct?
Fair assumption.
Okay. So no existing zoning map that's up to date, which means that it's really hard to tell anybody no to anything in a legally defensible way. So that was one of the things that kind of got my, caught my ears, got my ideas turning around, and then I spoke a little bit with the mayor and the city business manager, just all different things that Alva could benefit from. And so that's where this has kind of come in. We partnered with Roger and just wanted to come in, offer you guys some services. We've kind of broken it down into different phases, so you could pick one phase and not the other, or hopefully build on top of them, because that's kind of how we've broken it up. So phase one of what we want to propose is really the research phase of this project. It would be gathering as much data as we possibly can, mostly GIS data. So we want to build what we call base map, which is just every small piece of information possible, compile it all into one map that's legible, that is available for you to use, as well as potentially available for public use. So maybe being on a website or what have you, just so that people have access to that information as well. This can include things like lot lines, school district boundaries, topography, political wards, other relevant features that you want to be made available internally and externally. So this phase one is what we're proposing tonight. That's the contract that's in your agenda packet. That's where this really stops. Until we get to phase two, phase two is more hands-on. Phase one is a little bit like, you know, we're looking at all these maps, we're creating them, we're using basically data that exists, as well as potentially coming up with new data as we find things. Phase two is where we get more into the zoning portion of this. So reviewing all of the ordinances and making suggestions for how they can be rewritten. We personally cannot rewrite those. That would have to be done either by your city attorney or by a land use attorney. However, we can and will, should you want to do this phase, write you a report outlining the key changes based off of our research into your zoning ordinances and best practices in and around the area. And then we would use that information as well to create a zoning map. A lot of that will be done by going out, looking at how the land is used currently and categorizing it that way, as well as using aerial imagery. We'd go parcel by parcel, do a land use inventory, and draft that map based off of everything that exists right now. And then the council would have the opportunity to adopt that, change And then the council would have the opportunity to adopt that, change it as you please. Phase three would be all of the public engagement process for this. So public hearings with these interactive maps available, so that people can come in and say what they either love or hate. If their property has been categorized correctly or incorrectly, we can make adjustments based off of that. We would want to do joint planning commission and city council meetings, so that we have everybody in the same room at the same time. We'll do staff reports and presentations, do a summary of all the comments that we've gotten and make any changes based off of the recommendations that are in those meetings. Task seven is the adoption of that zoning map. It's a little bit complicated because it may require getting some of those ordinances actually changed first. But that is again up to y'all and how you want to spend your tax dollars. Phase four is really just the future planning of all of this. So phases one through three, let's set up a good base. Let's figure out what's going on right now. Phase four is how do we project this into the future? So in a lot of places what they have is called a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is an extended, extremely long document that kind of packages everything that's existing and gives you projections into the future. How you want the community to look, where you want the business growth to be, how you want land to look differently in the future. You can put pretty much anything you want in there, parks master plan, plan for the airport, plan for the arena, whatever it is that you want. Those efforts are extremely costly. And coming from a place where there's no existing zoning map, ordinances are a little bit older, you would be looking at like a $400,000 process. But that's not what we're proposing. We're proposing getting you to the baseline. You would have the things that you need to kind of project into the future. And one of those items in that is a future land use map. So it's a subset of a comprehensive plan, but it allows you to look at the land use that you have right now. So your zoning and then decide how you want that to look in the future. So if there's a part of town that you would like to move to more commercial in the future, you put that as commercial. And that would also include public involvement. But essentially that's just a, we hope this looks like this in 25 years. A lot of places use this as the justification for granting or not granting rezoning opportunities or changes or requests, or special use permits or conditional use permits. And then we would look at task nine, which is the planning processes overhaul, ensuring that you have consistency within your planning procedures and workflows, as well as looking at all the different applications you have, assessing whether the fees that you charge are high enough for different applications and items like that, and just making recommendations for administrative improvements. Those are all four phases that we're recommending. Tonight, we're only doing phase one. That's what the contract is in your agenda. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
So phase one, task one and two.
Correct.
That gets us the current zoning map plus, plus a planning map?
So phase one will get you a base map. So that's all the existing data from the county assessor, any data that we create in regards to looking over lot lines, school district boundaries, topography. Zoning is going to be a much bigger task, which is why we put it in phase two. So that is, these are, those are separate things.
Can you discuss, just for some of the people watching the video later too, what will be some of the positive benefits of bringing our zoning up to the modern era?
Bringing it up to the modern era, I mean, for one, it would allow for simplicity. Currently, I think looking at your zoning ordinances and being somebody that, you know, works in planning and zoning full-time, I was a little bit confused. And I can imagine that, you know, the everyday person, well, not that an everyday person reads zoning ordinances, but anybody that's trying to figure out, can I apply for this on my property? Can I do this on my property? They're going to have a little bit of a hard time. And so updating those things, you know, updates the uses that are allowable on properties. It makes things more clear and also just condenses things, or at least that's what I would recommend. Just condensing those uses, condensing the categories, so that everything is simple, allows for ease of application and ease of understanding, but also sets you up for a future where when people come and request things for you or land use changes, it's very clear what they can and can't do. It just makes it less likely to look subjective when you give an answer to people.
I know that some of the complaints that I get from people that are either developing or interested in developing is exactly what you say. You know, we may provide a developer a copy of our zoning ordinances, but it is not something that, when I hear from people, it's not something that they can take and adhere to without some extra level of consultation and advice. And so I think that that's, that's got to be something that we focus on. We need people that want to come in here and develop property and contribute to the economy. And whether that's residential or whether that's retail or whatever it may be, we need that. And I think, you know, whether we approve this tonight or not, I think it's got to be a focus that we figure out how to do this moving forward.
I was going to, you know, as a kind of a point of reference. In the 1970s, there was federal money that came to Oklahoma. And most cities and towns, their zoning maps, ordinances, and all happened in the early to mid 1970s in Oklahoma. And that's what we're looking at. Yours was 1971, so it was like the first pass. And there's not really been anything touched. And in working, you know, with Dakota in the past, a lot of the issues happen because you've passed zoning changes, you might have different uses here. And all of a sudden, if you're trying to do this economic development work and you try to do some creative land use and changes, it become, as Dakota mentioned, it becomes hard for it to be defensible. And so I think building this in a building block fashion is being able to do this in phases. And then we can break the phases into tasks and it can be done as you have funds. Because most communities have spent $300,000 to $400,000. And that's towns of 5,000 up to 20,000. And all you then have is really a comprehensive plan. You don't have a working tool that like save your economic development, your city manager, your zoning commission. They have nothing really to work with, so.
Is that kind of the estimated cost to get us to actually the point where we have all our zoning updated?
No, we, at this point, we estimated out phase one. So that's, that was the sum that was in your contract for tonight. I can tell you that phase two is going to be a heavy lift. I don't, I'm not going to tell you it's going to be $300,000 because that would be absurd. But phase two will probably be the heaviest lift out of all of these. Just because with the zoning map, we're going from zero to 100. We have to make sure that we're doing it right.
Well, we have, for council members that don't know, we attempted this 2019, 2018 or 2019. Mary Ann and David might have been the only other ones in the room. But the pandemic happened and that all just kind of went out the window. But yeah, we, I bet we've got 100 properties that their original, you know, lot lines have been altered due to neighbors selling pieces of their properties to neighbors. And so what happens when you're in a residential eight zone and you've got 8,000, you know, square foot on your property when it was originally drawn out, now all of a sudden you're zoned for a property that has to have 8,000 square feet if you're going to modify your property or add on to your house or put in a driveway or whatever this may be. And so, so we've got all these pieces of property, either 7,000 or 7,500 square feet, but they're in their zone RGA. And this is all stuff that we've got to get cleaned up. Number one, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, because I know just enough to be dangerous, but you probably know enough to correct me if I do mistake something. But if a property owner were to go and try to offer one of these properties for sale, they may not get financing because if a storm hits and they have to rebuild, they can't rebuild on that. And, you know, things of that nature, it could, it could end up being, you know, a really significant issue for people in our community.
Or even just for, you know, say you want to put an add-on to your house, you have no, you can't, you shouldn't be able to get a building permit since you don't meet the criteria for that parcel of land.
And so, you know, I'll bet we've got over 100 properties that are going to be in that category of miszoned and more inappropriately zoned. And we, we need to figure out a way to do something about that moving forward. Because it's been something that we, like I said, we attempted to try and address it back before the pandemic. And yeah, I'm glad you're here presenting information to us today.
Thank you.
So I just want to get this clear, what, for the 50,000, we don't get really anything new. We just get what we have put into a map. Is that correct?
We're going to verify everything. We're going to go through and use our survey department to ensure that lot lines are correct. So there will more than likely be changes there. Depending on if there are additional layers that you want made available in terms of things that are like on the lower end, not a new zoning map. But you know, if you're like, well, we want, I already put city council wards in there. But if there are other things of that nature that you want drawn onto a map that is available and editable on your end, that's the other thing. It gives you access to be able to, you know, carry this on into the future so that you can make edits on it yourself.
Like for instance, we have a cultural entertainment district that's probably not on any of our maps.
Right. So that can be drawn on there into another layer. Really, we can add anything on there that you want.
So when you're done, is it going to be like a digital map that they have at city hall that they can say, click on this lot and it says what it is? Is that one of our receivables?
That's something we're going to have to iron out, but it is a potential, yes. That is more like into the further GIS portion of all of this. We'll have to figure out the hosting of it. Is it hosted within our server? Is it hosted on your website? So those are questions that will have to be answered. But it wasn't necessarily in our eyes, a phase one thing. But I do, we want you to have access to and have the map for yourself when it comes to the base map for phase one. So yes.
Anything else, guys?
Does the county be involved in this? It's split all three districts of the town.
Are they probably the only question? County doesn't have anything to do with zoning inside of our municipal boundaries. They own property within the city limits, so they, that might be impacted, but.
Normally with the county assessor data, it'll classify a property as either residential or commercial, but that's about it. And that's just for their own taxation purposes, not for zoning categories or anything like that.
All right. So if that, if that's all for the presentation, we'll move on to the next item. But thank you both for coming up. And sorry to the, here comes not open tonight.
I know, I'm disappointed.
Stay tonight. You can go eat lunch there tomorrow.
I'm sure I'll be there.
The next item is discussion and action to approve entering into a contract with SRB LLC to provide city planning and zoning services to the city of Alba. As much as I want to jump and do something, we're going to need more information where we're, how we're paying for it. And also I think, you know, no offense, and we appreciate the presentation, but we might probably pursue some other quotes or proposals.
And if it wouldn't be too difficult, I'd kind of like to see a baseline of what you think you could get us to 100% for.
Okay.
Interesting to have.
For sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you get into all of this stuff and it, number, the dollar numbers are surprising when you look at it. But you have so many discrepancies with what's going on that when we pull from the county and get the abstract, the abstract company and we get that, if we don't figure out how bad it is, then we can't really tell you accurately what the zoning. Now certainly 21 zoning categories is way too many. I mean, that's just, there's not a reason for that. That probably happened because over time, various councils, planning commissions, people would have said, oh, well, let's just create something because we couldn't agree. But I think our biggest concern in all of this is, like the mayor, you were saying, cleaning it up is, if you move forward with like your arena district or some of these other land acquisitions and you don't have things straightened out, then you could end up into economic agreements with people. And then all of a sudden, then you've got a zoning conflict or you have just lines that aren't right. And I think going into this, you know, a lot of communities have a very outdated zoning map because they didn't keep track of changes that were voted and approved on. You know, there's going to have to be a way in the city attorney. We talked to other attorneys and we felt like this approach would allow your city attorney to do a majority of the work. Because then that way you're not hiring a specialty land use attorney to be able to do it. But when you move into the, to the later phase two and three and four, we'll base a lot of these land use choices off of windshield surveys, doing the zoning type work. So I think it's, I don't want you to feel like, oh, I'm paying $50,000 for a map. You're not. What you're paying for is to do all the research and work with your city staff and then try to dig into where things are wrong before you actually go spend money on trying to change the zoning. Because if you change, if we go through and do the zoning map with you and did a land use and had a few meetings and you adopted it at planning commission, and then what if, what if the, what if the base map's wrong?
We do have some deliverables from the last time we attempted the process that could probably.
Well, and that may be something, I mean, we've not factored that in. We started from zero. So, you know, that's something that, this, this contract is mainly set up to where you can move, move forward with each of these tasks as you go. You might in a few months say, hey, we need to have task nine, which is we need to know exactly what forms we're having. And you may want that help first. I mean, we're dealing with the city right now that has no way of keeping straight the forms that they're getting in. So, you know, that's something that you have to consider, so.
Can you provide us references?
Absolutely.
That have been in similar size and situation?
Yes. Yeah. Variety of different references.
My recommendation is going to be that we table this. But that we need staff. But that we need staff to, to give us some more information so that we can make the right decision for us, but.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we table item 11.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Parsons to table action on contract with SRB LLC for planning and zoning services. Is there any further discussion? Please call vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Well, thank you both again for coming up and.
I, I want to make sure, so y'all want references? And you wanted the full cost breakdown for all items?
Yes.
Okay, or are there any other items, any clarification I could provide next time?
You know, more information may lead to more questions.
Yeah.
I know.
We probably need to see what other deliverables you did have from the past.
Okay.
Because that might make a difference, so.
Ooh, get to, have you seen those files? Stelling might have them.
That's only eight years ago.
Well, I think Stelling might have them.
All right, well, we appreciate it and we're here to kind of help you dig out of the hole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item, 12, is discussion and action to approve the appointment of Mrs. Mary Hamilton to the Alba Library Board. We have a vacancy on that board. Mrs. Hamilton actually learned, when she learned of the vacancy, she actually reached out to me and, you know, she has served on this council before. She has a good understanding of how our boards and commissions work. And as an educator, I think she, or retired educator, I think she'll be a fine member for that board. And it is my recommendation and to appoint her and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to appoint Mrs. Mary Hamilton to the Alba Library Board.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Hoffman to appoint Mrs. Mary Hamilton to the Alba Library Board. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right, item 13 is discussion and action to approve the appointment of council member Joe Parsons to the Alba Airport Commission. I mentioned this at the airport board the other, last week, that I need to get some things off my plate. Joe's been pretty active in fly-ins that have been happening out there at the airport. He's got a good rapport with the board members already. And therefore, I am recommending that Mr. Parsons be the council representative to the Alba Airport Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of council member Joe Parsons to the airport commission.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Dr. Larr to appoint council member Joe Parsons to the Alba Airport Commission. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Item 14 is discussion and action to approve City of Alba Resolution 2025-007, resolution of the Alba City Council amending the fiscal year 2526 annual budget for the city of Alba. This item is due to. Okay, this, this, this item is for this year's budget.
Yes.
My understanding that the, the lease on this vehicle did not, while it was in the detail of the budget documents, the total was not.
This is the vehicle that the airport didn't want.
This is one airport didn't want. Okay. It was, it was in the detail of the airport board. The airport board doesn't need an Explorer. So therefore, all right, so you go for it. What exactly are we?
So the airport did not want, airport did not want their, that lease purchase with Enterprise for the Explorer. So we are moving it to the general fund and it will be the city car for travel. And then in turn, our health insurance premiums came in lower than what we budgeted, so we're reducing that expense to lower our expenses in the general fund. So that's what this budget amendment is.
Can we not just sell Enterprise, we don't want it?
They've already been ordered.
Well, we don't need a city travel car, nope. I don't feel like we do.
But we do have, we have one and it is nearing an age that they used to go to Stillwater, like the guys just took it to go to Stillwater for training. It's, that's just, I mean, that's where we were told to put it. So it's, it's ultimately up to you, I can adjust, so. But that is the reasoning behind this budget amendment.
Why did the airport not want it?
They don't need it.
They said they don't need it.
Yeah, they don't participate in their program. They've got, airport's got a good courtesy car, nice little, I think it says Chrysler.
Pacifica.
Pacifica. And they didn't seem to need to have, have two vehicles.
These were the, all these cars that are on this budget are the ones you guys have already approved to purchase back when we did the lease, the, the contract with Enterprise. So we have to put it, we have to put it somewhere.
Does the car show or are the money somewhere?
Well, both. We have to pay for it somewhere and then where we're paying for it is where the car's going. It needs to go somewhere. It doesn't really impact the general fund greatly. We're saving quite a bit with our new insurance premiums, so. But that decision is yours.
Could we upfit it to a police vehicle?
We got, those are on the list already too.
I just, I don't know, I have a hard time.
What are we getting? What are the vehicles we got? We just, we agreed on five vehicles, right?
Next year?
This year.
This year, yeah.
Well, this year and next year.
No, this is this year. 2025, 26, if it's for next year, I'm gonna table it.
This is this.
No, no, I'll just, I'll just give you a second.
This is for this fiscal year, 26. We have a truck. We have the police vehicles. Also, he's got to bring up everything that we ordered.
What does the big stuff like with the airport want a vehicle? Now they're saying they don't want a vehicle after they ordered it?
It wasn't discussed with the airport board in advance.
When, when it was ordered, they just, I guess, it was assumed that they would want one, so that's where it got placed.
Police has got two that are coming already on 2024, 25. In 25, 26, they've got another one, another F-150 truck. And then city car, the road van, another water pickup, animal control, and then another water three-quarter ton.
What's on there for next year?
All this stuff right here.
For 20, for fiscal year 27?
20, there's another water vehicle, two police vehicles, another water vehicle streets and a cemetery ranger.
Could we upfit the Explorer to the police vehicle and take one of the police vehicles off for next year?
They get grants for theirs.
Could we do that? Just give them the Explorer this year and then?
I've talked to Enterprise, I don't know, it, it may be too late to try. We can probably get it up fit, I guess.
Oh, that would be, that would.
But that's gonna give them two.
I'll make the amendment however you guys want it. I just have to account for it in the budget because it's there. And so I have to.
We don't have to have them to write the check, right, so.
Yeah, we have time. I was just, I'm trying to stay on top of all the amendments so we don't get to the end of the year and have a ton to go through.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm confused on the Enterprise deal. Do we not have to approve each time a vehicle is chosen? We don't, okay.
The way that, we call it, a jet item was written. It, it covers all five years or all future interactions with Enterprise.
So what do we plan on doing with the car that we have as a trade car?
We're gonna replace it with Explorer and then sell it.
We'll sell this one?
Yeah.
How old is the vehicle this will be replaced?
Where was it on there to be replaced?
It's, it's 2015 Taurus.
How many miles is it?
Is the city hall car out there?
That was already on there for this year to replace?
No, it was.
Where was that?
Down here, this is next year.
It was already on there for next year?
Yes, it was already on there for next year.
For 27?
Yeah.
Since the airport was getting rid of it, or they didn't want it, I just moved it up. I bet you moved it up to a slot where we were already planning on getting an Explorer.
So we were gonna replace the car the Explorer's replacing next year?
Yes.
Or we guys just go for it? We were gonna do it next year and then we just don't put it on next year?
No, I've already, I've already played the show game with anything for next year. Once you're trying to get the oldest and the stuff of the most of the ones first.
And how many miles is that car?
It's got 82, some.
82,000.
82,207, 254. And they have a lot of miles and they're not real hard miles, but it's just, it's getting old. Not in the best of shape.
But we have to take the car, so I, I don't know.
Can I ask a question? Didn't Enterprise say they would help us liquidate the equipment?
They kept it on the list. I believe in Arkansas, they could, they could sell them all for us. But the whole is different.
They'll, they'll liquidate everything that we have on the program.
Yes, once, once.
But not our, not our existing.
Not the stuff they have currently. I said in Arkansas, they could, but there's some law out here that allows them to do that. But when we start rotating out these lease vehicles, they can liquidate those. The stuff we currently own, just go and let's try and sell them.
So you're saying the stuff that are replaced and they're gonna get rid of the old vehicles for us?
No, no.
Not the ones that the city currently has already.
Oh, okay.
Any vehicle that Enterprise provides when it gets replaced through them though.
But that's, then they'll liquidate that.
Ninety, ninety, almost $9,300.
And with our insurance premiums, general fund itself is saving about $50,000 since we got the better insurance rate.
Okay, so this is a budget neutral for the general fund?
Yes.
Would it have, what, is it budget neutral? So the health insurance is being reduced, the lease purchase is being increased?
Yes.
And the revenue's zero?
Yeah, we're not missing the general fund revenue.
The total amendment is zero?
No, we're not, we're not touching revenue. The total.
Oh, so the total reduction is 50,000?
So the only increase to, yes, so actually.
So the, all those health insurance items?
Yes, that totals about 50,000. Hold on, let me add it up. I put it in the format that I was told to put it in my Crawford's. I should have added just a total line and I didn't, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, just that one, mine I have in Department 508 is $18,000 reduction.
So the insurance is being decreased, $50,721. So that, so we're decreasing insurance and then we're increasing by 9,200, but we're still, I mean, we're still ahead because we're decreasing $50,000. So. So the total.
The net there is about 40 grand.
Yes, 41,433, 36 is how much we're decreasing expenses.
And we're getting a vehicle we had scheduled for next year this year, yeah.
Yes.
We don't really have a choice. We have to take it, so.
Now, what does that do with the list for next year?
I've heard, I've heard the show game and murder with it around.
But we, we haven't approved next year, so.
We haven't approved, we gotta approve next year.
We need to just take one vehicle off next year and get it this year.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then I say we just go.
Because we, we can't obligate a future city council. Or a future budget. That being the case, I'm comfortable approving this amendment. My recommendation would be to do so. And I'd entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve City of Alba Resolution 2025-007, a resolution of the Alba City Council amending the FY 2025, 2026 annual budget for the city of Alba.
Second. Have a motion by Dr. Larr, second by Mr. Bowman to approve Resolution 2025-007, amending the FY 25, 26 annual budget for the city. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Larr?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right. Go build cars, Eddie.
I'm not, I'm staying right here.
Item 15 is discussion and action on Resolution 2025-008, amending the fiscal year 24, 25 annual budget. So this is last year.
The one we just closed out. This is adjusting any increase to revenue and any increases or decreases to expenses because we have to have, it has, nothing can be over budget. So we had to do amendments to bring that in. So for example, grants, we had more grants than we budgeted for, which is great. But then in lieu, we have more grant expenses because we got more grant funds from forestry and for libraries, so those line items were over. So we had to do a budget amendment. So this is cleaning up fiscal year 25 that we just ended.
So you can see there's, you know.
There was a lot of it.
Eight or 10, you know, revenue items and then probably twice as many expense items. The expenses are going up by 225, the revenue's going up by 261. This is, this has already happened. So this is just approving it so that our official budget is reflected appropriately.
I'll motion to approve City of Alba Resolution 2025-008, a resolution of the Alba City Council amending the FY 2024-2025 annual budget for the city of Alba.
Second. Have a motion by Dr. Larr, second by Mr. Hoffman to approve Resolution 2025-008, amending fiscal year 24, 25 budget for the city. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Larr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yep.
Ferris?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
16 is discussion and action on Resolution 2025-009, resolution of the council amending the fiscal year 24, 25 annual budget for the City of Alba Tourism Fund.
So same thing, tourism brought in more revenue because of the hotel tax increase, so we need to adjust. They also had more revenue than budgeted. So there is only an increase, an adjustment to revenue because they brought in more than what we anticipated.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Alba Resolution 2025-009, a resolution. The Alba City Council amending the FY 2024-2025 annual budget for the City of Alba Tourism Fund.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Creckenberg to approve Resolution 2025-009, amending the FY 24, 25 budget for the city tourism fund. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
17, discussion and action to approve City of Alba Resolution 2025-010, amending the FY 24, 25 budget for the City of Alba Airport Fund. This is gonna be largely grants.
Yes.
Proceeds and projects.
Yes, they had, because of the, the grants from the FFA and the ODAA, we have brought in a significantly more amount than we budgeted. So we have to adjust the revenue and the expenses accordingly. I'm waiting to bring it up to make sure I don't miss anything else that might be on there.
And I will say that on the expenses due to traffic, gas and oil were above anticipated.
And then the other ones were just line items that were over that we needed to budget in.
I entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve City of Alba Resolution 2025-010, a resolution of the Alba City Council amending the FY 2024, 2025 annual budget for the City of Alba Airport Fund. Am I wrong? Is that right? Yeah, airbrushed.
Second.
Motion from Dr. Lars, second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve Resolution 2025-010, amending the fiscal year 24, 25 budget for the City of Alba Airport Fund. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lars?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Creppenberg?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
All right.
There's more on the other funds.
Let's, uh, let's get all these knocked out. Recession, City Council, and go to the utility authority.
Sounds like there's nine of them all together.
All right, we'll call the utility authority to order. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lars?
Here.
Creppenberg?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Ferris?
Here.
A dear.
All right, we are going to come back to items three and four and start with item five. Discussion in action to approve the City of Alba Utility Authority Resolution 2025-003, amending the fiscal year 25, 26 annual budget for the Alba Utility Authority.
So we're not touching revenue for the fiscal year 26, but we are. So when we were doing the budget, it did not pull in the hydro back that we had said we were going to do, we had proved to do it. It kind of worked in our favor because we did actually get a lower interest rate for the lease purchase. So it actually brought that payment down. And so instead of thirty-eight thousand that was originally budgeted for it, it's now gonna be thirty-three eight.
So we just, yes, the timing, we don't have to approve this one at this moment.
No.
And it sounds like the actual amendment may be less than this.
That was the newest numbers that I was given by Steve.
I got your number today, non-state.
Okay, so never mind, we have new numbers as of today.
So I think we can table this one.
If we have lower numbers, I would rather do the lower numbers if that's what you guys want, so.
Yeah, I'm bored.
I'll motion to table item five, state of the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Dr. Lars, second from Mr. Hoffman, to table item five as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lars?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Creppenberg?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Item six, discussion in action to approve the City AUA 2025 Resolution 2025-004, amending the fiscal year 24, 25 annual budget for the Alba Utility Authority. This is, again, amending what's already occurred. It reduces, or it increases revenue and reduces expenses. Total increase in revenue is a million, one fifty-two, eight, twenty-one, eleven. Total decrease in expenses is two million, three ninety-one, one eighty-five, seventeen.
And that is because before I was on, we budgeted loan revenue for that loan, for the loan forgiveness, but we don't actually receive those funds. They, they paid out the expense for us, the company did. So we never brought in the revenue, we never expensed it. So our expenses were super high when they shouldn't have been. So it was kind of skewing our numbers as well. So this is just to reduce it to the normal amount that was the one point five.
And that's a net positive adjustment?
Yes, yes.
Motion to approve City of Alba Utility Authority Resolution 2025-004, a resolution of the Alba Utility Authority amending the FY 2024, 2025 annual budget for the Alba Utility Authority.
Second.
Have a motion from Dr. Lars, second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve the AUA Resolution 2025-004, amending the fiscal year 24, 25 annual budget for the AUA. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lars?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Creppenberg?
Yes.
All right, we will recess the AUA and call to order the AEDA. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lars?
Here.
Creppenberg?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Ferris?
Here.
A dear.
All right, we'll come back to items three and four and go to item five. Is that a budget resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion in action to approve the AEDA Resolution 2025-003, a resolution amending the FY 25, 26 annual budget for the Alba Economic Development Authority.
This is the one that had the formula error. We had it, but when we added the new line, the total didn't sum it. So we were looking at it all along, it was approved with it, but because it wasn't included in the total that we submitted, then we didn't balance. Now we have, since it's one of the vehicles that was already placed the order for and approved, we need to bring it into the budget to make it correct once that lease purchase comes due.
So just to clarify, the detail was present in what we presented?
It was.
But it was not included in the total?
Yes.
Scratchy, didn't catch it?
Because when we did it, we added the line and it just auto didn't sum all the way down, so. And we're not touching revenue.
Any questions? I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-003, a resolution amending the FY 2025, 2026 annual budget for the Alba Economic Development Authority. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Dr. Lars, to approve this AEDA Resolution 2025-003, amending the fiscal year 25, 26 annual budget for the AEDA. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lars?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Creppenberg?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Item six, discussion in action to approve the AEDA Resolution 2025-004, resolution amending the FY 24, 25 annual budget for the AEDA.
Same thing, to close out the year, they had an increase in revenue and then to correct or, you know, decrease or increase expenses as needed to balance for 2025 closeout.
So this, okay, they had an increase or a decrease in revenue?
They had an in, they had a decrease in revenue, but a decrease in expenses because everything that was budgeted for the capital pool outlay, it was, we're decreasing it by one point one.
So revenue's going down by a hundred and six, expenses are going down by one point one.
Yes, for the year.
So it's a net positive change as well.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-004, amending the FY 2024, 2025 annual budget for the Alba Economic Development Authority. Second.
A motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Hoffman, to approve AEDA Resolution 2025-004, amending the FY 24, 25 annual budget for the AEDA. Is there any further?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
Did you want me to explain what we're doing?
This is a different.
This is a scholarship?
Yeah, we're not there yet, there's.
Oh. Oh. I'm so sorry. I solved it, I was watching the computer.
Is there any further discussion?
I'm sorry.
No discussion.
I'm just gonna, let's just jump to it, I'm sorry.
All right, please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lars?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Creppenberg?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right. Get ready, Steve.
This will happen if you even wait some three, three, five.
Discussion in action to approve AEDA Resolution 2025-005, resolution of the AEDA, amending the fiscal year 24, 25 annual budget for the AEDA Scholarship Fund.
My time has died now. So they brought in more revenue for the scholarship fund due to interest, so, and the sales tax. So we're bringing that in. And then because of, we expended a little bit more than what we budgeted for the scholarship expense, and then we have to budget in that two hundred and fifty thousand that we used for the CD that was approved last month, but the auditor says we still need to budget it in, so that way it's not showing a negative expense. So that's what this is for.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-005, amending the FY 2024, 2025 annual budget for the Alba Economic Development Authority, AEDA Scholarship Fund. Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve AEDA Resolution 2025-005, amending the FY 24, 25 annual budget for the AEDA Scholarship Fund. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Creppenberg?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lars?
Yes.
I would make a recommendation for future, this happens every year, that we consider putting these on the consent agenda. And then if there's any of them that need discussed individually by the council members, we can pull them out and do so. But we can get through that a lot more efficiently.
I also plan, it's all my notes, like for grants, when we get more, to be bringing them as they come because we know what that, obviously, what that revenue and what that expense and if we budgeted for. So I'm gonna try to do these more often. There's obviously some things that we'll have to wait till end of year, but grants and stuff like that, that can come beforehand, so.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Director Beer.
Sorry for the interruption.
All right, we will return to the city council meeting for item eighteen, discussion in action to authorize the business manager to utilize the Capital Reserve Fund for the, for funding the Hatfield Aquatic, Hatfield Park Aquatic Center in an amount of two hundred and nine, two forty and ninety-nine cents, two hundred and nine thousand, zero forty dollars and ninety-nine cents for the final pay application. So with the funding for the, I'll give you a little history and then how this has come to be. It was the original intent that the general fund paid for the engineering because at that time, the pool was not part of the AEDA, it was part of the general fund. And oversight, the funding for the engineering was pulled at that time from the AEDA. And so this doesn't make that whole, but it is a general fund expenditure that was intended a few years ago and didn't happen the way it was intended. But this would be what this is for. Being that it's coming from the Capital Reserve Fund, it meets the criteria for that. But it does require a supermajority vote in order to pass, which that is defined as three fourths. So tonight, it's gonna take more than three fourths? So just six out of the eight. So there's only seven of us here, but it's gonna take six of us to approve this resolution or this expenditure. Like I said, it was unforeseen. So it did kind of, or it was an oversight, I don't know, but it does involve public infrastructure, which no existing appropriation existed. So it meets the number three criteria. It was not outside of the bounds of the established capital year plan, except that it wasn't budgeted in the capital year plan. It was budgeted in the capital year plan, but it was not budgeted to use these funds. So that meets the criteria for number one as well. And it actually meets probably all three. The current funds available are more than what was budgeted for this coming fiscal year as well. So we're good to do this. It does take care of an error from previous year. Any questions on that? I don't know, Gil, were you on council, Gregor, were either one of you on council then?
When he changes from Clark's to referee, Clark's.
Well, when we approved the engineering.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay. I have not misstated that, have I?
No, that was the gentleman.
Okay.
Now this, is this paying everything off? I mean, is it our pool then? I mean, duh.
This is bound to pay up.
And how long did it take us to save that up?
Couple of years, yeah. What's the balance in that account?
Four hundred and some odd thousand.
So we're not using it all?
No. Just a portion of it. When we didn't get that half a million dollar grant, that screwed everything up.
And if we didn't use the Capital Reserve Fund, what would be another option we would have?
There's really, there's not another cash fund available. It's not restricted for another purpose.
I'll motion to approve item eighteen, as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Dr. Lars, second from Mr. Hoffman, to authorize the city manager to utilize the Capital Reserve Fund to be used for funding the Hatfield Park Aquatic Center in an amount of two hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and ninety-nine cents for the final pay application. And that's not the entirety of that pay app, is it? It's not a portion of it, portion of it, it's just a portion of it that wasn't, the funds weren't available with the AEDA. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Law?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right, thank you guys on that one. Discussion and action to approve Resolution 2025-011, Resolution of City of Alba, Oklahoma, authorizing the lease purchase of a 2017 Pelican Dual Street Sweeper at an annual payment of $31,478.44 for a period of five years, a total price of $175,000, and authorize the mayor and/or city business manager to sign on necessary paperwork. Now, I will point out, and I hope, I hope it's in here, or I'm asking if it's in there, city council cannot approve a multi-year lease, except we approve it every year. So, when we get around the budget time next year, this will need to be approved in the budget process, and if it's not, then we give the equipment back to the lender and they liquidate it. We're out what we spent on it for the year. We're out what we paid in the lease. Are we good on the lease agreement for that?
I don't know that I've seen the lease.
And I screwed, I screwed that up, to be fair. This lease through NCO is seven years, not five years. I don't know why I had five stuck in my head, but it's seven.
Kinda ahead of the limit.
I thought we just got it.
That's true.
We approved it.
Approved in the budget.
Yeah, we approved it in the budget.
It's over his spending limit, so.
Yeah. But keep in mind, it's also the Alba State.
No, it was a.
We need to table it.
Yeah, because we got the, by the way, the Alba State today, that same, that same piece of equipment.
We have that.
All right.
I gotta get something to this, I'm gonna lose it.
I thought there were sweeps.
I thought there was a holder to put on it.
We're gonna, we recommend we table this one. So, I entertain a motion. Did you guys all hear that? We got a better deal. So, we recommend we table that.
I got a question. Who are we getting this through?
Who's it?
The company is. So, you're gonna make it by date, huh? I think so. Oh, this is just the lease servicing center? Yeah, but it's key.
It's some, it's a company down in Oklahoma City, they've got offices in, like, Wichita, Kansas City, Oklahoma City, Dallas.
Whenever we bring this back for approval after it's tabled, could you have information on, like, the hours of, I mean, it's a year old piece of equipment, just has me a little wary anytime we're purchasing something used?
Yeah, and I can, this is the company that takes, like, that 2017, they take it in and they completely go through the whole thing.
Okay.
And completely refurbish the entire thing. My friend even comes to the warranty. After it's been refurbished.
Would they be interested in some of our stuff?
We talked about that for ours. I don't think they're gonna do this much for it, because it's, it's on its last legs. We can do something.
I mean, I'm just wondering if we can, you know, if we can get rid of some stuff and maybe save some money at the same time, if they do.
I'll have to talk to them, like I said. They've, they've seen ours, and they're, it's.
I'm proud.
Pretty old, it's been kinda, runs under the radar, so. Javis table, we got that better, better street from Alba State.
I'll motion to table item 19, as stated.
Second.
Motion from Dr. Law, a second from Mr. Hoffman to table item 19, as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Law?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
I think for future reference, did this require a resolution, or could we have?
Now, so that's, that's how that company.
That company required a resolution?
Yes. But, like, if we, let's say we go to the Alba State, all it is is just, yeah, just approve the contract. But, for some reason, these guys wanted a resolution.
All right.
So, so I spent my hard, hard days' work driving up a resolution.
Tell them to provide it next time.
They did, but it's confusing as hell.
Item 20, discussion in action entered into executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307 B1 and B2 to discuss FY 2526, City of Alba IFF Local 3782 negotiations, and City of Alba EMS hiring for all positions. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I'll motion to enter into executive session.
Second. Have a motion from Dr. Law, a second from Mr. Parsons to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Law?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 22, discussion in action approving the 2526 City of Alba IFF Local 3782 contract. No action to be taken there. Item 23 is new business. I do not believe we have anything that qualifies as new business. Item 24, remarks and inquiries by council members.
You guys, you guys, I got, I'm trying to talk about it, we can do a special.
When could you guys do a special meeting for those lease purchases? Probably, it wouldn't have to be a long meeting. Just get all the information out well in advance, and it wouldn't have to be a long meeting.
Sure. Does anybody, everybody available to do? Are there any dates? Good evening, Thursday?
I'll make whatever works.
I would do Thursday evening. I'll be here if you do it. Go beer?
Gil?
The only reason I need to get this done is, we signed a deal with this company Key, whatever their name is, and they're holding that stuff for us for 30 days. After 30 days of doing, we cannot hold it for us anymore. And I know for a fact, there are three other towns that wanna buy the Hydrovac, and two of the towns wanna buy the Street Sweeper.
We kinda do this this week or next week?
It's either, yeah, it's this week or, like, next Monday or Tuesday.
Then you have the stuff ready?
The other thing, I mean, I've got it all there from base right now from Alba State Bank.
Is there any way to divide our new business?
Thanks, because the other ones are already on the agenda.
I agree.
So.
I'll be in town tomorrow.
I've got it 48 hours for special, so. What's ever you got next, Monday evening?
I don't think I got anything.
How much city council? Gil, you gonna do that?
Gil is gonna fly back from Greece.
I dare make it back by then.
I have no events.
All right.
How many do we need? Five?
Five.
One, two, three, four, five.
Okay. I'll set her up, I'll set her up for 5:30 next Monday. If that works.
5:30? Yeah.
And I will be back to Alba, I'll be back to Teleport. So, but yeah, now, Alba State came in as a pretty significant drop in interest. So, I thought, should do it as a team, save some money.
All right, any other remarks or inquiries by council members?
I just wanna give a shout out to the pool staff. Going that long without a day off, and not having problems is impressive.
They had a day off today.
I know, I'm just saying for today, it's impressive.
They had off maintenance. The real reason for the maintenance is, our chlorine contractor couldn't get his chlorine and it ran out. I mean, I was, I went out to Walmart yesterday afternoon and bought 10 gallons of chlorine just to get there to get us, get them back for the party they're having tonight. But they did, we got a new contractor at Wichita, it's gonna be here tomorrow with the water for you. And they're more responsible than that, so. So, yeah, it's, it was all cool.
Well, the staff and everybody that's pissed in, so the kids can swim for right here, it's just been, the whole thing's been great. Been hearing comments from people, a handful of them from Eunice, I've seen, either they put something on social media or said something to somebody here in town, and it's, it's been great.
There was a lot of people there this weekend with the reunion.
All right.
What, what are we doing on, on Fourth Street?
South Fourth.
South Fourth?
Yeah.
Replace that road. It is horrible.
We're replacing the whole thing, though?
Yeah, that, that block, right there between Pelican and Alba.
Is that the only road we're doing this on?
No, no, we've already done Third Street, South Third, and you have Harbor Road.
Are we paving it?
This one we're paving. Chip seal on Third, chip seal on Harbor, so. He's got a couple others on the list to do.
We're gonna keep chip sealing it down, or are we gonna do it asphalt?
No, we're gonna keep chip sealing.
And side road?
Depends on road, yeah, depends on road, whether there's a waterway, whatever it is, just goodness.
Can you bring us that plan?
Yeah.
Any news?
Thing on Lawrence.
Oh, yeah, they did. They got that culvert across Barnes, got that filled back in, and they'll get it repaved sometime soon. And then, they still gotta get over the pool and pave that, the East parking lot, but we are gonna pave that too, because that's the front of Park Lot, so we're gonna make it asphalt. Then, it's gonna kind of back at Park Lot, so it'll be fine chip seal.
Can we adjourn? We have the consent agendas. So, we will adjourn city council, return to utility authority. Item 3 is discussion in action on consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved of the AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority, any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, and then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16th, 2025, and B, approval of claims in the amount of $615,322.72 and payroll expenses of $27,553.12. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Hoffman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Law?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
There is no item four. There's item seven. Item seven is discussion in action to approve. Hydrovac tabled. The Hydrovac. We tabled the budget resolution for, is that for that?
Yes.
So, I would recommend we table the lease purchase resolution as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to table item seven, as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Hoffman to table item seven, as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yep.
Swallow?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Law?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
There is nothing that qualifies as new business, and item nine is to adjourn, you can do that. And we recall to order the, or return to the Economic Development Authority meeting. Item three is session in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved of the AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority, any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, and will be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration in action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16th, 2025, approval of claims in the amount of $49,265.25 and payroll expenses of $33,711.26. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Hoffman, a second by Mr. Bowman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Law?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
There is nothing that qualifies as new business, and four we are adjourned.